You are watching Access Support County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the December 20th meeting of the Trail Creek Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www accessesupportcounty.org.
... All right. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. We're going to start off this evening's meeting with approval of the minutes from the November meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or questions? This council had a chance to read the minutes. The only correction I had was a typo on Potawatomi. It should have an "I" at the end. Any others? There are no questions, comments, or questions? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I have a motion to approve the minutes. Do you have a second?
A second?
Sure.
Well, it's fine. Give it to Sharon, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of the fund report? Did you actually anything that stood out to you in the fund report from last month?
Just that we went ahead through state order accounts and opened up funds 255 and 256 for the opioid, abate restricted and unrestricted.
Okay.
And then we also did receive money, $3,700, but you won't see it on here because it was, this is November, and we received it in December.
So you guys can have a look. And there are specific ways that we can spend that money, so we can go through that later.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve the fund report?
I do. Oh, go ahead.
I have a motion to approve the fund report.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, payment of the bills. Josh, you did see two payments to Department of, and I assume that's to Indot?
Right, I saw it for the same amount.
Yes, one of those is void. It doesn't show up on the APD for some weird reason, especially that, that style.
Mm-hmm.
But it is, there is one that's void.
Okay, which?
The total amount is $22,875.
Okay, and which one?
Check number 4503, I believe.
Is the one that's void?
Correct.
4503.
It printed on regular paper. That's why we have to get it.
And then which fund is that coming out of? Because it's listed as two different ways.
There's two different funds that it came out of.
Because I'm showing Riverboat for one and the other for street repairs.
Correct.
So is it coming half and half, or is it?
Correct. Does it not specify?
No.
It's like this style, and I, I believe the majority came out of Riverboat.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills for November 2022.
I'll second that.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, do we have? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And moving on, given correspondence?
Yeah.
Awesome. As far as reports, though, I do have a letter of intent from Kate. I'm sure if it's covered in your package as well.
I did see that.
But she does want to return to us to be our MS4 representative. Her fee for next year would be $2,235. That's what's proposed. So we'll need to add that to new business to approve that further on. Other than that, I have a meeting with Kate along with the towns of Long Beach, Michiana, and Potawatomi Park, just to try to get everything straightened out. We had a meeting with Long Beach and Reggie Corthallas and Nicole Mesker, just trying to go over responsibilities and what everybody needs to be doing. The meeting didn't end up going through that, however. It ended up going through the money that's already in the account and how they want that spent. And it looks like that's going to go for educational purposes. So we still have a compliance task list that we need to go through. I'll sit down with Kate and go through this, and we'll, we'll start moving forward. So there's that. Moving on, Mr. Riddick? Good evening.
Good evening. Nothing to update, other than response you were going to read by dedication of, well, opiate funds. There, there are, Josh Lane shared too, what the, the uses can be. So, well within, and I know you guys are going to get to that. But otherwise, as you raised the question about dedication of the road.
Yes.
And so, yeah, it would be appropriate that if you're inclined, just prepare a simple resolution to let us know. I kind of have a date for the meeting in a few years for next meeting, and things are sort of fine. But otherwise, I have no other updates.
Okay, thank you. Questions? If you're wondering what he's talking about with the street dedication, I was asking about possibly renaming the portion of Rainbow Trail that's along the front of the town hall here, in memory of John Doyle. Oh, because of all the work he's done for the town throughout the years.
Yes.
So, the thought was to take, my thought was to take from Sarah Jo down to Park and rename that section for him in his honor. And then we'll put the sign up there here. So there's that.
Yep.
Any questions or comments?
Will that be honorary, or?
Yes.
Because I'm going to have to go through.
Oh, right. No, 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 yeah. Definitely.
We're not going through all that. Thank you. Moving on to our, our engineer, Mr. House.
Okay. We have two documents. This is about the, I think everyone passed it down for us. And CCMG, that's your show.
Thank you.
Seth.
Oh, it's Josh and Josh.
Josh and Josh.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
All right.
They'll pick the extra one up, if anyone wants.
Sure. And there's the next one, but then if anybody needs it. So, what we did was combine the streets that were on the list that we recently received by email, week, two weeks ago, and then also a couple additions. At least one, there were, somebody brought up Bluebird, I think it was the town marshal at a meeting early this year. Bluebird?
I don't know that I did.
No?
Oriole, one that I though.
Okay. Then maybe it was Miss?
Bluebird is one you and I knew when we were out and about.
Okay. All right. And then took a look at the streets that had been included in a previous grant application that wasn't awarded. I was going to think it may be Riverboat, so. And talked to Josh Lane about the town's budget, and it seems to me that, that there needs to be a decision about, about what, you know, what streets to include to fit the budget, because if, now, these are very much approximate costs listed on here. We have not spent a lot of time looking at the details of these. What happened was Joe and I drove around, we looked at streets, and I took notes and limits. But before we get into making any detailed level process, I thought it'd be good to give you a budget level, so you can decide if this fits your budget.
Please.
And if not, which ones should or should not be included, which streets, so that we can zero in and we're not spending a lot of time on things that aren't affordable in the first place, as far as our engineering time goes. So, I was hoping that, you know, you guys would have some ideas about, about what you wanted to do, with which streets, not what you want to do with, but which streets you'd like to include, and about how much you would like to dedicate towards a project. Josh, you mentioned to me that, that the project, maybe the town's share would be no more than $150,000.
160, if you maximize everything.
160, max.
That would be all, guys, that would be all of our Riverboat budget for next year.
I would say it would stay under 150.
Yeah. That would be 30,000 out of the NPH street repairs, and 50,000 out of the LS.
I think even 150 is probably pushing it.
And then, my understanding is that 150 would cover everything, the town's matching and any engineering fees for this project.
Correct.
So, then for, I, I don't know what the fee is going to be until I have a better idea of the scope, what, you know, what's going to be included. If all of the $150,000 could be used as match, we know, I understand it cannot be. But if it could, that would make it for a total project of $600,000 in construction, because there'd be a $450,000 grant, you know, hopefully you're awarded the grant. So, the total number for whatever combination is arrived at of streets to do, needs to be under $600,000. I think it would be good to bid, oh, I'm sorry, to, to go after, pretty close to, to, you know, what you think you can afford. You could always, like I say, the bids come in too high, because it's been kind of a crazy bidding cycle in the past year. And that'll be something we'll take into consideration when we get into making a detailed cost estimate, and it's finding out from asphalt companies what they intend to charge for some asphalt next year. But you want to have enough projects that you can eliminate some, like you could have alternate bid items, and if the price is coming too high, you can say, no, we're not going to build that one, we're not going to build that one, to get the project underneath what you can afford. But anyway, what I'd like your help with is to determine what projects you think should be included.
Can we ask what JDA means?
JDA is John Doyle Associates.
Okay.
And actually, Walnuts was, part of it was completed, two areas were completed last year in your town, paving project, but did not involve CCMG. But I wasn't sure if there was additional area on Walnuts that, that you were interested in paving.
I don't know. Wait a second, anyone else?
I can't think of anything off the top of my head.
The only part of Walnuts that I feel would need attention is being by Johnson Road. That's starting to.
Cut the intersection?
Going over that, yeah, right before the intersection, last couple houses, because it's really deteriorating, almost like we're, it starts coming down.
Is that from possibly where the forestry company came in, did all the work, and?
Was using that as their?
Was using that as their interest in this?
This is further down. This is, you have the two homes east of the entry to that. It's, this is in front of the second home. Not, not, not the old, uh, weather price that used to be on the corner.
Right, but they're coming in and out of here.
Okay. And they do a bunch of work in front of the Moose on Walnuts?
It's down to the west.
Those western there?
Yeah, from the Moose, west to the next intersection, Walnuts, I'm assuming. Down with that.
Now, we want to go to Green Tree, to Johnson.
From Johnson, yeah, from Johnson to.
Wasn't Canary Place finished?
Canary?
It wouldn't even be back to Laurel Drive, go off this year.
Because that's on our list, yeah, I thought that was.
There's a short section that's really bad at the end, coming up on that little building, it's fine, it's just that very, and it's dropping off on the side, the side of the woods there, it's really getting real bad.
That was on, that was on, when I think was last year's.
Wasn't Canary Place recently done?
Was it?
Yeah, Canary was about two, around this year.
So we can take that one off, though.
That one, you can pull off of them.
Canary, okay. So Canary Place is done. And we're not sure what Bluebird held, but.
Bluebird, if you come off of Greenwood, um, right as you start getting past that first house, it's really torn up pretty bad. And it's nothing that can be just patched. It's really.
That would kind of go along the Oriole Trail.
Yes, yes. Same conditions.
So are all these roads, when we, when we are looking at this list for, for, for each of these streets, are we talking the whole street, or are we talking just parts of it?
Sections, the portions that are highlighted in red, is what they're talking about?
Okay. Now, do we know which streets are, are in more in need of repair than, than others on this list? So we have to, in my opinion, go to the budget and, you know, really narrow it down, which? We kicked Brookdale down the road two years ago. That one should be at the top of the list. And I know Oriole and that first section of Bluebird that Joe was talking about, those are probably the worst streets in Trail Creek right now. Brookdale, Oriole, and, and Bluebird?
I don't feel Brookdale is going to fail.
It's not the, it's some type of drainage or lack there.
Okay, you know, that's what, that's the part that, you know, I didn't know.
Yeah.
And or, you know, that Tim didn't know. So it's on, strange on top.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's something different than that.
And it's, that's been on our list for a few years now.
Yes.
More than, for you, but yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it turns, it gets really bad.
And seriously, Johnson is starting to get real bad.
I, I don't know that we can afford to do $483,000 or so.
I understand, I understand, although we, that's something we need to keep on our radar, because.
We could probably do sections, but we couldn't do it entire way.
Our, um, tire glamour last year is starting to rear its head again.
Yes, that, this last, I'm trying to, I mean, correct. But in the 12 years I've been here, I've never had anybody walk through the doors talking about a tire that they lost on Johnson Road, and I had two people.
Yeah, and that, and we had filled it with gravel, because we didn't have it, we didn't get it patched, and that was last winter.
But aren't those areas that we could section out and patch, like we have other portions?
There's some areas that can be sectioned out and patched, but there's, from south of Cool Spring is almost impossible section. Tim and I went through, drove it, um, you can see kind of where like, towards the edge, where the tire, where tires always run, and you can see that, it's just all cracking in on itself, almost as it was described, that the base is starting to fail.
You're talking about Johnson?
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there's some.
It was south of Cool Spring.
Running, also when tires are running, those areas are base failing.
And that's the same with Greenwood, I agree. Greenwood's getting to that condition also.
When it's, but when it's base failing, you can go ahead and mill and paint it, but it's just going to fail again. It needs like full depth patch to hold up. You need to go down all the way to the sand, or whatever the name still is down there.
Clay.
And then start over, on the whole road section.
Would that be some, my question to Joe was, can we take it section by section rather than doing the entire thing? Because we can't afford to do the entire road, and that's not.
Well, and that's where this profession comes in, if you say, we'll say, hey, this is, you know, I can advise you that it looks, this is what it looks like. The marshal can advise, well, it looks like we're on the streets, and I mean, you guys are too, you live in the town. But that's his expertise to be able to say, hey.
This is what we're talking about.
This is more intense than just looking at this.
So, maybe we look at sculpting down Johnson. There's a few places that, that pot hole that we talked about, that is working its way out into the, into the Southbound lane, that you patched that, that would be one. Some of these areas with this base failure, and it would be, you know, just kind of hit this, do some patching basically.
Where are we with the, are we still in play for possibly getting a hot patch machine? I know you, you look.
I have discovered some other avenues on that.
Okay.
Instead of putting out so much, they do rental, by the day, by the week, by the month. And we want to help keep it. So, I am in the process of looking off, getting it, the, from me and actually myself, then, to get the information.
The call opens January 2nd and closes 27th, so we need to get that done, probably tomorrow.
But again, that's not the next year.
Um, you know, you, you know, I don't know exactly how you do, if you do phone polls, or, you know, like if there was an email, and you guys talk, everyone.
Do that here in the.
You do it and publish, you know.
Game, I'm a reporter.
So now, you need a.
I search every time I search for them, you know, they're gone, every time I know one, it's gone.
What was, uh, which is what, what are they going, right, 40 to 60? If they have any time for playing, get that done.
Like, you know, more information. So would, would any of that be?
13 or 16.
We would, we would recruit any, if you was renting, it would be better off buying, buying and shooting.
Well, I, I think we do, because we got the lease season, and you get into looking at my comp's rentals, right?
So, I think we need to be working on the work that, I say.
Yeah, because that, that.
A little later than Joe does really help.
Because a hot makes a lot better than a cold match.
But if you just move your regular, just the one, I know, just as a suggestion not to create, so you, you could possibly just move it, you have your regular meetings that you're going to adopt and give the publication right and the alcohol, but you could just move that one and provide proper notice, and you can cut that 16th meeting if you want.
That's a great.
Unless you'd like to have two meetings, of course.
Thoughts on that, council? Instead of having the January 16th meeting, moving that to the 10th? And then coming in ready with our street, the street suggestions?
Yeah, no, I'm good with that.
Maybe it would be the, yeah, not the 17th, not the 16th, but.
January 10th.
Right.
I'm good with that.
January 10th.
First, like, when it's 7 o'clock?
Yes, so it'd be our regular council meeting would move up a week.
So Tuesday.
Yeah, good.
Okay. So we'll move our regular meeting for next month to the 10th, rather than the 17th, and Josh Lane put out notice for that. We will need to come in with, with your suggestions for the streets, though.
Got it.
Is that, is that okay for you?
What I'm thinking is we would go through now, like on Johnson, we'd narrow that down for this form of 82 grand, and, and get rid of, we want to pay that from that down.
Okay.
We're looking at doing, fill that with patching, and areas that really need it.
Okay. We do the same thing on Greenwood?
We can do the same thing on Greenwood now.
And then about Cool Spring as well, because that's a significant portion there that I know we can't. As much as I would like to say, let's do all of it, we know that that's just not going to be possible.
We talked about, there's that Johnson, Walnuts near Johnson, Greenwood.
And Cool Spring.
And Cool Spring.
And what was the, I see you have Pine Tree Drive marked, what?
Pine Tree Drive, so, Walnuts to 20. Oh, yeah, okay. This is really in poor condition. It's, I don't know, they're taking some photos. Joe, do you remember?
Yeah, it was right, right there, where the, was it, the pumping station, right there? At least, just past Redwood, where that one big pot hole is, just before the complex out there, the Evergreen complex, there's a bunch that's all torn up, right there by the pumping station, and then it's the same, the same scenario like Johnson, and that. It's all failing and crumbling in on itself. And there's a pot hole that keeps, like the one over on Leo, that keeps, we fill it, and it's about this deep, we fill it, rear's its head again.
Yeah.
Fill it, rear's its head again. I mean, there's some of these bottles we fill, and they stay good, but that one keeps, it's another one that's failing, you can see everything else dipping down like this with it too.
Okay.
So it may be based, again, again, this is professional, but that may be in our base failure.
In my notes from our tour, I've got at least two areas that were really bad.
Yeah, and that's the two, that was right by the pump station.
Yeah.
Because I remember you, you were looking for the pump station, and you said, oh, I got it right on the side of my door. And then we were up further, just past, um, Redwood there.
About the last house, yeah, we kind of get to the, the Evergreen.
Yep. And there's, that was, it's a smaller area, but, yeah, I mean, that's the one that keeps rear its head, it keeps coming undone on us, and you can see where the whole thing is starting to dip down.
So we want to do at least two patches.
Right, but to look at that as well.
You were talking about the one on Leo and Johnson also, that's up in the right street, there's one that keeps coming out.
Yeah, and he was supposed to put something in there yesterday, or today, today. I'm going to check it on my way in in the morning, because it was dark when I came in, but I want to make sure he did fill that up, because we went and got millings from E and M, and we've been using the millings to fill, and they stay.
I say those, okay.
And they stay, instead of using gravel.
Right.
So for winter, we can roll that stuff and just use it. So we've got a dump load this morning. And it's cheap.
So if you can do the updates, can you email that to us, and then, with the higher that, and we can all come prepared for the next meeting?
Yep, change the tense.
Just so I'm going to make sure I understood, we're, so we're talking about this, not looking at Oriole, Robin, or Bluebird?
I think we'd like to do those still, but we don't, I think we need to make changes to them.
Okay, so we'll scale, so basically we're looking at scaling back some of the visual lines, is that?
Right, so it's just a little larger projects.
Okay. Okay.
Because I know Oriole, and Oriole, and if you're saying Bluebird is the same, they're, they're pretty much dirt roads at this point.
Yeah, they're, and they're right there, it's the same, same area.
So, moving, we don't have a car, so.
It's our, right in here.
And there's something that would be for Greenwood south, is that Oriole?
Right, just off of that.
Where is the, the bad spot on Bluebird? Is it pretty much the same thing?
It's right in here.
Oh, this is Bluebird? No, that's Oriole.
Oh, that's where I'm seeing.
Bluebird was the one that was like an alley, Tim.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's like a one lane route, basically.
Okay.
So it's off the street, you know, and.
Okay, and up to, up to the curve.
Right, up the curve, and then you go around to Oriole on the other side.
I remember that was in pretty poor condition, like that on Oriole.
And after us, we can leave, I'm.
Wow.
Anything else?
I, I haven't heard anything new about the two houses connecting the sewer on Walnuts. I don't mean, I told for.
I haven't seen any work being done over there at all either, everything's stopped from what I've noticed, unless anybody else has seen anything.
I don't know.
Yeah.
About the only thing that, that's happened from my end since your last meeting was I got ahold of the Sanaterius Commission, City, gave them some background, so they know what's going on.
Got it.
Thank you.
Yeah. That was it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Anything from the park department?
The board will, I just want to bring up again, that, you know, Menke Road is falling apart, really, that.
Oh, yeah.
The sides, they're fumbling, and, and again, it's, it's truck traffic, the trucks driving down the sides, and they're, they're just busting off the side of the road, all the way from Fiber Bond through the curves, it's just.
And part of that is Michigan City, it's not solely Calhoun Creek.
Well, the parts that are falling apart are ours. The, the east side of the road in front of Fiber Bond is Michigan City, but the west side is ours, and that's where it's worse. They have two entrances, from the south entrance, all the way up through curves. Once you get into the curves, that's Michigan, or check that, that's Trail Creek, and that's starting to bust off and fall apart.
So I'm wondering if, I don't think we get any tax revenue from, from Fiber Bond, I'm wondering if we can ask Michigan City to fix that portion of the road.
That should, honestly, and again, this is your expertise, that should probably be one of the two, because that is horrible. You go there when there's a semi coming through there, as tight as those curves are, I'm surprised a little bit isn't taking out. a little bit isn't taking out, because it is tight. Even pulling the leaf machine through there, it is tight.
That road is not designed for semi trucks.
No, that's not.
It would be ideal if they could find a, a way to bring the entry in off of the, um, industrial park and let their trucks completely there and save our load. Cause there's, there's just, you know, there's a lot of truck traffic. It's not that the loads are heavy, I wouldn't say the loads are heavy, it's the actual weight of the vehicles.
It was just the vehicles, how they don't.
And, you know, driving along the edge, like you said, when you go up against the semi, he's going off the side of the road, it's just breaking it off and there's, there's no, uh, no shoulders to speak of. So I just wanna, I, I, I've been pointing this out for several years and I just, you know, it's, it's getting worse.
Marshall, is it, is it from Fiber Bond's driveways north to the parade or south?
North, yeah, that second, they have two driveways, the southern driveway, just a little bit past that, all the way to the north.
All, all the way to the north, basically.
Yeah, but it's worse, you know, along that stretch than the curves.
Would Fiber Bond have any liability in that, in that road issue being that, that road really isn't designed for trucks, but that's the only in and out for them to.
It's them as much as potentially the trucks, and it's someone who follows with them, plus seeing how all of that development goes with the planned project that's going there, right? And maybe that gets improved as part of that, so.
Right.
I think some of these things get buttoned up and I know Pete has, has mentioned that, but especially with Michigan City reminding, if that's gonna get back on track and maybe it'll address some of those concerns.
Okay.
As part of that. Or at least you have the ability to make some mandates in there as well.
Right.
Okay, anything else before we move on? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on then, anything from the park department?
Mr. Service, no.
He said no, he's not the park department.
That's true.
All right, so nothing there, our building inspector is not present this evening?
I was moving ahead.
Anything for planning and zoning?
No.
Thank you. Our police department?
Oh, I see you're trying to.
Skip that.
Good evening, and as you guys know, at the bottom of the break up, our public meeting is the, um, old cars are on the road, they're done, they're outfitted, and, um, we had a little missed out one already, dear, uh, little road, but it's minimal damage and it'll get fixed right away. Um, at the last meeting, we had talked about laptops for the new cars, and I, and I was, I talked to you about the, um, Panasonic Toughbook, the CF thirty-three, that was the one that I saw that impressed me and I told you at that time, that for four, it's gonna be between fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. Uh, that includes everything, that's the, the Toughbook, um, the car mount, the desktop power supply, um, so I ended up getting an estimate, uh, from the, uh, reseller and I was pretty close, twenty-one, three, three, six for four laptops. Uh, I went ahead and got two other quotes for two different types, kind of all the way across the board, so you can make a decision on what you wanna do. This is gonna, I tell you right now, these are not purpose built, but they're built for this purpose. The difference being, purpose built is they're built to B A M D T, that's, that's not what they're built for, they're built for ruggedness, and that's what, uh, two of these three S that I got are both built for ruggedness. Um, some of the pros and cons about this kind of option is price, that's an soaring amount of money for laptops, I'm not gonna lie. Uh, the positive side is it's actually a tablet system that has a docking station keyboard, and that docking station keyboard docks into the dock in the car, and then you can take the tablet out, which everything is built into the tablet, um, the memory, everything, and use it as an independent to the keyboard, so when you get to a house, you can take your tablet and actually sit there and type in the information from, as opposed to writing it down. Um, it's coming to the station, you take it out of your car, you go in, there's a docking station on your desk, no more desktop, you use a computer in your car. For paying for a luxury, that's all it is, I'll be straight up. It's, it would be nice, but so would having Mercedes police cars, you guys are gonna approve that either.
No.
So I went ahead and got two other quotes, one is for an HP, it's a standard laptop, like what Mr. Willoughby has, just a household laptop. We can get four of those with power supplies to forty-four hundred, just under forty-five hundred dollars. Um, they're not, they're not built for the ruggedness, but neither was the one that's in my car, I've had it for ten years. It's just, it's time to go, it has to go, it's, it's too slow, it's Windows seven, it sits behind the times. The other rugged book is a Dell rugged book, it is a, it's a Latitude fifty-four, fifty. It's literally just a laptop, like, uh, like what Mr. Willoughby has, except it's a rugged laptop. Very similar to the Panasonic that I talked about first, difference being it's not a detachable, uh, tablet, this is actually a one-piece fold shut, it stays in the mount in the car, uh, if you wanna take it in your office, you just connect it, take it in your office and reconnect it. And that does come with, um, the desktop, yeah, the desktop docking station. The idea is to be able to have all of our information that's on our laptops, check that on our desktops in our cars, so we don't have to have two separate computers, we each have two computers right now, and to me, that's silly. Um, so all these second options, oh, excuse me, the price on that is, uh, just under thirteen thousand, twelve-nine. Um, biggest downside to this is we can get the computers and all the peripherals relatively quick, but the docking station, the part that lets us use the car, our projected ship date is August third, twenty-three.
So is the HP, does that have a docking station as well or no?
The HP, we actually already have, um, universal mounts in our cars that wind and contract and expand according to the size of your laptop, and we would simply just use what we currently have. So really, and there's no additional cost. On top of that, that first one in this, uh, between the two rugged books, we are, we're looking at about an additional thousand dollars cost in installation of the power supply and the docking station in the vehicles.
What was the total for the, uh, total for four on the HPs?
Forty-four.
Oh, forty-four, fifty-two, is the exact number. I, that's, for whatever reason, I do not have an estimated delivery date on that, I thought there was one in email and they're wondering, or I put everything together and I did see that, I'm not sure why I didn't get that information, but I asked for it, I don't have it. But being that it's simply a standard household laptop, there, there are some benefits to it, and, and I, that made me to believe that it's gonna be better than what we have now, obviously, but what we have now is we have the, the old fashioned hard drives that have the discs that spins and magnets reading, so there's moving parts on our hard drive. These are quoted as solid state hard drives, there's no moving parts on the hard drive, actually, I don't have any moving parts on the computer, because there's no optical drive, uh, there's USB ports, the only moving parts are gonna be keyboards.
As much as I would love to say, let's do the Toughbooks, I don't think we can do those.
No, I, I got the HP.
Yeah.
Josh, I know you're.
In a minute.
Fair enough.
And I, you know, you want, I, and I was at, actually at, um, Costco yesterday and I was on the phone with our IT guy, going over the ones day I had on sale, but they just didn't have enough memory on them. And by the time we buy memory and get it installed, we're ready, we're paying for these, so.
Looking up something.
Okay.
It's not loading, so.
And what's the, what's the ship date for either one of you, both the second and third are ready, just not the dock?
Sure.
Both of the other, the HP and the Dell are both available?
The HP, I don't have a ship date, that was the one I asked him about. I, I asked him, I didn't get it. The Dell was, everything was coming, um, by the end of the month, except the docking station in the car, that's August of twenty-three, so.
And that doesn't really help you with anything?
Exactly, you can't.
So we'd be looking at the HPs.
That's a huge price difference. Me, me personally, as, as much as I like the, the, um, the Panasonic rugged book with detachable tablet, if I was spending my money, I have five, I don't have them to do.
So.
I, I.
I'm glad you understand why, what our thoughts are.
I know you guys don't wanna say no, but it's okay.
Oh, oh, I, believe me, I would say no.
I have that feeling, that's why even with a forty-five hundred dollar.
Um, I, I would like to know when the HPs would ship before we spend the money, or say yes or no.
I can find out tomorrow, that's from automated app, gotta count.
Okay. Any other parts of your report before we talk about this? That's, that's the end.
That's all I got to say to you tonight.
Counsel? And the max would be forty-five hundred, right?
Correct, total.
Total.
Total, that's, that's.
Four.
Four, that's correct, that's the.
And then you, that would eliminate your desktop and your laptop in the car, you would still keep the desktop.
Yeah, cause these, these get locked in here, I mean, yes, you can take them out, but it's, you, you have to have a special wrench, you can use your on the side, pull it open, wiggle it out, take it in, and set it down. We, generally, we don't take our laptops out of our car unless we're getting repaired or somebody's gonna be borrowing yours, you know, you don't need your laptop in the car.
Right. Those HP laptops, they're not recognized at all?
Uh.
Cause that would be my concern, if you're not taking them out of the car at all, hot and cold and.
Pete, I think I had a laptop in my car for ten years, roughly, I'm, I've got, it's been so long, I don't even know how long.
Okay.
And it's, it's fine.
Okay.
So I mean, I, I have no problems with it, but in, in, in my laptop's defense, I keep my, I have a heated garage at home, I keep my car in my garage at home. When I'm at the station, it's a garage here, and when I'm driving it, I've got the heat for the air on depending on, so I really don't have problems.
And those have solid state drives in them or not?
There are.
Okay.
We got backlit keyboards, they're not touch, we didn't, we didn't get, you know, we didn't need the touchscreen.
Right.
That's not important to us. I can't keep my hands steady enough while I'm driving, touch the screen when I need to touch it, so.
You just don't have a, a leave time on those at all?
Yes, the only downside I thought I asked, you know.
I almost would feel better encumbering the funds and then having you come back with some other information, maybe see if there's another laptop that you would want, if there's a different.
We're not giving Mercedes them.
No.
Without the Mercedes, it's irrelevant at that point, this, this HP is pretty decent. If I can get them cheaper, or if I can get something cheaper, I'd be more than happy to, it's, the problem is this.
I think my, my issue is what happens if you find out the full lead time is too far?
Right.
We just don't know. If you, if you, what if, how about I propose this, let's just make it even, up to five thousand dollars to spend on laptops, and I let you know what I want. Um, next laptop is no longer working, his screen went out.
Okay, so you, that's imperative then.
The, the tiny thing is the back.
Do we have any budget, do we have enough?
I think we can spend it out of the, um, the fund that we have for.
I thought you did have enough in this budget.
Exactly, your budget, it's the other fund that.
All those come out of.
Yeah, the CCD fund.
The issue is, is that we have a thirteen thousand dollar outfit bill to pay on CCD as well.
So that takes it down.
We paid one, it was twelve-five, but we have another one that has to come out of CCD.
So it's fourteen.
Could it come out of your capital outlay?
Yeah, probably, how many, what's in there, thirteen?
We've still got like fifteen to twenty thousand in there.
Yeah.
So if we could do that?
What can come out of it?
If we could do that?
Yeah.
Okay. So counsel will need a motion to allow the police department to spend up to five thousand dollars?
I, I will make that motion for them, to allow the police department to spend up to five thousand dollars on brand new laptops for their vehicles.
I'll say it, go ahead, sir.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Yeah, definitely, history, history is, is really, yeah, I mean, it's, you know. It's been going out from the opening, when you work midnights, it depends, you're closing your laptop, because no matter how low you put it on the brightness level, it's still distracting.
Kills your night vision.
Exactly, yeah. So the opening and closing, well, that shows you how long he's had it, because he's been on days for.
For a while.
Over three years, so, but that's, that's what kills him, and his finally gave in and then.
Okay.
Okay, we need to make that happen for sure, thank you, does anyone else for me?
No.
As always, we appreciate your support, thank you.
Thank you. Onto the street department. Good evening, Mr. Service.
It's not good luck, it would be from behind me for a nice one for that matter. Evening, so, thank goodness, leaves are gone.
You're right.
Just in time.
Good work you did, too.
Hundred-two loads this year. Uh, minor electrical issue with that machine, though we figured out, causing the engine to cut out on us, knelt right at the end. Uh, we did have to change the impeller and linings, uh, they were about destroyed, uh, but they lasted about two seasons, which is really stretching on that. Uh, we only had three days down, one of those machine issues, two we did rain out, cause I don't see getting the guys sick and having three people off and still not one out for another day or two, so, we just, the two days that rained, we just took off, and I'd like to publicly thank Jenna and Lexi, Pat Chivitch, I believe is her last name, uh, that was our two helpers, uh, Jenna's on fire calling with us and Lexi's actually her wife, um, and they both did excellent job, uh, helping us out. Uh, one concern, um, we were talking about the connections to the city sewer system in front of two thousand two one, it's road, we have a hole in our road, how is that gonna be handled? The residents gonna be taking care of that, their contractor, what's gonna happen? Because it's, uh, about a four by four pole in the road right now?
Is this?
That just has gravel in it, and this is from them doing the hookup for the sewer.
I saw it.
That would be the contractor that's responsible for that?
Yes.
I, I think that's, not to put we're working Mr. Haas, but if you get an opinion from them, that you think it's attributable to that, I think you'd make a demand on everybody. I mean, the, the contractor, you, I think you put the homeowners on notice and, I mean, you know, I'd probably put your insurer on notice just to see, see what's covered, but yeah, I think that we need to confirm that you think it's attributable to that.
Yeah, we might buy it.
Yeah, Joe, I looked at it, it's, it's where, it's right on top of the cemetery sewer that they were going to connect to, they dug the hole, the guy was at your last meeting, he had a picture showing a hole.
Yes.
So I think that's obvious from that.
So.
So, so your inclination is for me to follow up, I can connect with them this week or next and.
I would think so, yes.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's not, it's on the left side of the road, so it's not, they have the two houses that lead the sewer, it's across the street.
It's physically two thousand two on this road.
North side.
Like you're right off his, uh.
Right next to his driveway, right.
Right off his driveway.
Cause that was the guy I was concerned about them undermining his concrete.
Correct. Okay, um, along with the stuff about Menke Road, another deal with Menke Road, it was discussed this summer when we dug and found the area into that drainage pipe that flooded this spring. Um, I had mentioned that we need to look at, in that, you know, set up properly, and it was brought up to see if Woodruff would take care of that, and I believe you asked Mr. Willoughby to reach out to Woodruff, but I've never heard anything, and we're coming into winter.
So I, I think where that, where that conversation went was, is because Woodruff's gonna be.
Right.
Building the subdivision back there, there's literally going to be a road coming off of where that ditch is, going into that subdivision.
Okay.
So that's what we're saying is it will be addressed at the time.
Oh, so when that's gonna be done, okay, well. Oh, so when that's going to be done, okay, well. It is still fenced out there because it's a drop off. So it's still fenced. I mean, the drainage is working, I've gone away, everyone is raining, and it's working great. So I just didn't know where any of that stood, if there was anything that's going to be addressed now. We'll just leave the fencing up until, I guess, the project moves forward or we find.
How much of the drop off is there?
Here at the edge of the road, it drops down to the pipe, probably about a foot and a half, two feet. But then it drops down about three, four foot at the bottom of the pipe. So, I mean, it's, it is a decent drop.
Okay.
So the fence is a horned system and somebody's already taken it out and we put it back up. But just bringing it back up right now.
Look at that as well.
We looked at that together.
Yeah, I took him out to look at that.
And your opinion there?
It's pretty close to the edge of the road. That's a rail, I mean, big pipe, extend the pipe out, through the road, it's.
We had a drainage issue with that, and then again, drainage issue, but, you know. Again, I mean, even before we dug that down, I mean, it, it struck steep. It was a little bit more gradual, but it went down probably about a foot and a half and then leveled out. And then all that was filled in, we dug that out to get the pipe closed so it could wash. So, but to the east side of it is actually the pile of dirt that we dug up. So I mean, that'll stop a little bit something.
Right.
But right at the stop sign in that, it drops off. So it's something we need to still keep in our minds and, obviously, we're coming into a season so it's going to be hard to work with that stuff right now. It is fenced off though. We do have the orange fence out there and the barricade sitting, so hopefully deter as much as possible around it.
Well, if it helps at all, you know, some of this has stalled because of the ordinance.
Right.
The process of getting changed with city, but I owe Mr. Woodruff a call and some other things. And of course, he's anxious with updates regarding that. Obviously, I have no authority in either way to promise him, but I can talk to him to see if there's anything that they think in the short run they'd be interested in, you know.
That would be.
Happy marriage, whatever, because again, it's on the horizon, but in the short run, maybe.
I know, that's right.
Some work for them and.
Literally, if you look on that map, that's right where he's talking about, that's right where that road's going to go through.
Yeah, and that's what, like when I brought it earlier this year, I mean, that was the original discussion and stuff.
Right.
But I just wanted to bring it up again so it's reminded, let's put it that way. Of course, as everybody's saying, we know what's coming. Mr. Eric and I already talked earlier, yes, we have plans to tack. One truck's already ready since we had that early snow. The second truck will be fully equipped tomorrow, salted and everything. The pickups will be ready with their plows, everything will be ready to hit it. Diesel will be filled up out there, all equipment is fueled. We're ready to go on this one.
Are you planning to pre-treat on Thursday?
We will pre-treat Thursday. I'm going to watch when the, because it still has to be a little bit warmer, but raining. We need the moisture in order to get that salt to work for us. So we will pre-treat all the mains, the hills, and I'm going to tell them to do all the intersections. So we're going to make sure that's all done. And then we'll play it by ear. Who was in on Thursday?
You.
Nick, okay. I'll be in contact with Nick constantly to make sure of conditions and everything to, as this hits. You know, with the heavy winds, it may not be much building up on the roads. It may be squalls on the roads, you never know what happens. So, but we will, we're, we're ready to get that one taken care of.
Okay.
Thankfully, the last forecast I saw is calling for about a third of the snow that they were calling for initially, so.
I got sent the thing by New York Northwood and it's calling up for the twenty-one.
I saw that initially.
Different model.
I think every model.
Yeah, every model. And then, the last thing I wanted to bring up was with the two squads going into service for the PD and they were going to release one of them, I was wondering if the street department could absorb that vehicle as a different traveling vehicle and or the vehicle that I use the most. Just for, like during summertime and everything, traveling to and fro from my house. And then also, I can leave the pickups here for the guys to use for pulling trailers and all that stuff during summer. So it's something I'd like to have considered. You know, and then like, we just made two runs out to Fort Wayne. That would've been cheaper on field and run a twenty-five hundred pickup out to Fort Wayne. And, you know, to pick up the supply or, you know, get stuff like that. So that's another thing I wanted to bring up and I wanted to wait till they have their squads in service and all that. Okay?
Okay.
You said that.
All right. Any questions for, for? Thank you again.
Push to get everything taken care of, especially risky.
And I will say that you did do an excellent job on leaf pickup, so thank you for a job.
We tried, we tried, and I commend my group, they did awesome.
It was not easy.
They did awesome.
Thank you.
I think I may have forgotten to bring up the drawing, was I supposed to bring that up, Josh?
Which drawing?
The drawing of the town hall, what you guys. Yeah, I think I was supposed to bring that up for my presentation, since it wasn't on the agenda and completely forgot.
We can.
Just received it today.
Say we can.
Like five o'clock.
Yeah.
We'll bring that up in a later portion, but thank you. There's a clerk on there. All right. So anything from NERPC?
Yes, usually. I did have a meeting on December ninth. However, there was not quorum. We had some important stuff for budgets for 2023, but because there was not quorum, we could not make any decisions. We discussed other miscellaneous items, you can find that on our NERPC website. And then there will be a January meeting as well, which is the question of 2023 budgets.
All right, thank you. Moving on to old business, let's talk about City View or Blueprints.
Okay, you guys already approved that?
We did.
It basically, it's just for signature and to let you know that Mr. Willoughby did review again. I got the thumbs up, so I do have it here after the meeting, you guys can sign it.
Thank you. And then we have the salary ordinance, and that should have been distributed to everyone before. Josh Lee, if you want to, do we need to read through that or does everyone have that in front of them?
I don't know if I.
Josh.
Oh, I have that, I have it. Yeah, I've got it right here.
Any questions or comments on that? So do we have a motion to approve ordinance number one dash twenty twenty-three, which is the salary ordinance for 2023?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number one dash twenty twenty-three.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
We talked about the CCMG roads over here already, so move on from that. And down to new business. We talked about the police computers and we've already approved five thousand dollars for that. In your package, you also have a letter from Hudson Associates regarding the 2023 rates, which I know are just a slight increase from last year's rates. Looked like a minimal increase, at least from what I looked at.
Been a few years, so.
Did anyone have questions or comments on those rates?
I would like to have seen the comparisons to what we were charged for to these.
So I did not print mine out?
Right, I didn't, I.
Johnson, do you have that?
I added it in my packet, are you talking about rates?
We have, we have the.
The previous.
Oh, the previous ones, I did not print that out, I can get it for you now. If you'd like.
So I think we need to show these two names.
I have it filed right here. More organized than I think. So this is last year's rates.
This increase is pretty normal.
Ten bucks.
Yeah.
It's an increase on every line item, I believe.
Ten to fifteen dollars each.
Well, if these are, it's five, yeah.
Yeah, then five. Ten. Five. Seven.
And my guess is these just kind of cover costs that you already have that you've incurred or that you will incur for next year. Cost to do this now.
Health insurance, health insurance is one of the things.
Yeah.
But like I say, it's been several years since we've raised our rates in general.
Okay.
So just so happens that we're only on one year for you guys.
Well, I did my comparison, I thought it was great. I understood, right. So we need a motion to approve the 2023 rates for Mr. Haas.
I'll make a motion to approve the rates for Hudson Associates for the year 2023.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sheriff. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We also need to approve Kate's contract for next year. So do that on new business as well. For Kate Doyle to be our MSW representative at the cost of two thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars per year.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any public comment this evening? Our public is quiet this evening. Wow.
That's unheard of.
Any court comments this evening?
No, just then I'd like to have counsel review the town hall remat.
Yeah.
Yes. I think that's up here.
I like that design. Anything that you have?
Would you like me to just walk through it all?
Please.
If you wouldn't mind.
You were here, so.
I was here too.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Did you want to read through it?
Go ahead. So I'll come back by and, that way nobody can see it, you can see it too. So we had talked about making this area here, which would be inside Josh Lee's current office, the mechanical room. But the problem is, is that takes away all that additional storage, that's a lot of storage. So as opposed to giving up that storage, we decided, let's see what it's going to look like to have a bump out. Build an outside, you have to have an outside exit over on that side. So what he did was he added this little bump out, so it would be a foundation, a footing, walls, and that's where the furnace would go, furnace and water heater. And saltwater softener. And this would be the exit. This is the current council room here. This is this north wall, this would be the south wall. Right before this window, all the way to this wall, is, this is all storage. This would replace the vault that's currently in the garage area.
And that vault would go away.
The vault would go away, correct. So from that wall, or check that, from that window to the wall, to this wall, and then approximately, I think it looked like five feet, four feet, six inches off of this wall. So right in here, there would be more storage.
Okay.
Obviously, the bathrooms.
They look like they know that one will move anyway.
One will move behind the other. The one on the far side from where we're sitting here, beyond the left, will stay. And the one that's on this side will be moved behind it and will be used as the employee restroom. The one that stays up in the front will be remodeled, be handicap accessible. This room would all be fireproof.
Right.
Fire resistant, excuse me, that's fireproof, we know that. We get over into the other room, now this is where it gets kind of, this room is, obviously, the two rooms are the same length, but that room is about six, six feet wider, five feet wider than this room. So it'll be the same size, but it'll be a little bit wider. The only difference is, is they're looking at putting a kitchen up here, which would be from the door that's here, from the north side of that door frame to the wall. That would all be kitchened, and all the way across there would be cabinets. And there's just a little wall here where your setup would be in front of that wall. So that would be right in front of that door. So you figure you guys would be thwarted a little bit more. And the room would actually be wider. It's not as long, but it's wider. There was some talk, we talked a little bit beforehand about just removing this and then just backing this up a little. Or we could do the kitchen, there's, this is just preliminary, you know, just getting some ideas.
We want some kind of a pocket door or something to close that, so that. Just, just for privacy sake.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that can be done and saved.
They'll be fixed, they'll decide on the backend.
Okay. Josh Lee, are you good with this design?
Right.
One of the things that we've had conversations about is storage, storage, file cabinets, file cabinets, file cabinets. And we had talked about the, you know, replacing the file cabinets. But fireproof file cabinets are extremely expensive. And by making this fire resistant, that we don't have to buy those. But she's still going to want her cabinets out here that she can use. You know, you get the rolling cabinet, whatever, you know.
Right.
So there's, there's some things, because some of these, you know, you can see some of these are cabinets, these are cabinets here. These are storage cabinets, file cabinets here, file cabinets here and here. But that's, that's kind of like, you know, that's what we came up with as an alternate to the original, where this would have been the mechanical room. Again, we're stuck with this footprint. We're not stuck with it, anything can be done, as anybody in the building trades industry can tell you, we can do whatever we want. It's cost prohibitive to go outside of the footprint we're in.
There's two things I'm concerned with, and that's the size of this office. But, I mean, if it's as big as that one, then we're okay.
It's going to be bigger, actually.
Bigger, yeah, we're going to need a bigger space. The main thing is my, is the residents when they come in, you've got that door. Now, we get flooded with walk-in traffic.
Got it, understand.
Bill paying type of year, so for the first quarter. I don't want them to have to stand outside or be freezing. I mean, because, and also the transaction window, it's got to be bigger than this because that space is not going to allow a chair. I'm going to have to hand them a clipboard and they're going to have to sit because they're not, you know, our contractors, our permit, people. This little ledge here is not big enough for them to write on a piece of paper. So my other alternate is to walk them through the doors into council chamber and have them sit in there to fill out their forms. That's my only.
How wide is that hallway? Is that specified?
It should be specified.
I don't see any, there's no specs on there as far as how wide this is or how big this is.
This is about five feet, six feet.
Yeah, it doesn't share how big the hallway is, I'm taking that into account.
I can sort of be this hallway here.
This hallway here would be the width of the bathroom. And that's bigger. I like that wide because they have to take some space to make that, I think he said five by five, five foot by five foot to be a handicap restroom.
And he's got six by seven on.
Six by seven, I, for him, yeah, six by seven. So some of this will, because this has.
I'm saying that's going to be a four foot hallway, because if you take this into account, this is twenty-eight by twenty-four here. So this is the same, this side is the same as this side, sorry. So this is six foot and there'd be another ten, so this would be ten feet here, so that would be a four foot wide hallway.
That's not wide enough for us to have. That's not wide enough for us to have what you need.
I know.
Well, so my, my thought then would be to take this door, lock this door off and make the doors over here.
Going into the council chambers?
Yes.
I mean, we can line them down the hallway, you know.
But with the transaction window here, this door, there's no reason to lock this door if you keep this door locked.
Well, we would have to have access to that anyway.
Right. What's that, this?
The council chambers, yes.
Yeah, you would, you're here.
Yes. But keep in mind that we may have to put some contractors back there filling out their paperwork unsupervised.
They're going to steal the place.
They're going to steal, yeah. I'm sure you guys don't have.
How big's the kitchen in there?
Literally, it's just a countertop.
How long, the same? How long?
Six feet, maybe. It's, it's from this, you've been.
There's our measurements there.
Yeah, from the wall to the door. There's a door back there, yeah.
Four foot deep?
Normal.
I'm sure it's normal countertop.
Very small.
Two feet deep by countertops?
countertops are two feet.
Okay, I have a lot.
Isn't there any way you can take a small portion of this area? I mean, you're walking, how many carp trainers walk in at the same time?
It's not just, well, we do get a lot of carp trainers at the top of the year looking to register.
I don't know how big carp.
We've got to help them through that process. Also, we have a software program coming, so we are going to have to help them through that process as well. That's going to be the space that we can do it, which will be in here.
So the office is going to go from where you're sitting to here?
Right. Which is, if you turn it this way, it's about the same size as what we have.
That's really cool. Across here. About 16 by 12 now.
Get, we don't have file cabinets right now behind our desk. We've got a lot.
How big is your office?
About the size of this room.
A little better than what you said.
I think we're getting into this right now.
Here's the bottom of the office. You've got to keep it secure. It's got to be closed off for their safety because we don't live in the same world we used to live in 20 years ago. Okay, so we have to take that into consideration.
So we're going to put bulletproof glass up here and everything?
I, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying we have to take their safety into consideration.
All right, you know, this is one thing that some of the people, we talked about one time. Is this nice bulletproof, that's one of here? Is that one back there, bulletproof outside?
That probably not.
Oh, well, that's a question.
Right, I understand, but probably now's not the time for that question.
Let's make sure we've got safety for the ladies, for the ladies in the gym or for the people. And that's what I said.
So I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves on all of this discussion. So this is a great job, and it's a great second step, but I think it needs some more discussion.
Needs a little bit more tweaking.
Well, that's what we're here is because we need to find out how you feel, what you want us to do. This is your building, and, you know, we can only go so far.
Right, although, you know, I think I want some more input from Josh Lane, specific things.
I just want our residential stuff to be breathing and have a spot to fill up your paperwork.
And enough room for things to work.
We could talk after the meeting a little bit too. I have some ideas already.
All right, so let's.
Yes, thank you, Steve. But the ball's still rolling.
The ball's still rolling, and so we've still got forward progress, and that's, that's the point where we need to be at.
But these are going to be blocked, yes, these are going to be blocked.
Let's talk about that. Any other comments from the council this evening?
I have none.
Hearing no further comments from the council this evening. Do we have a public comment?
Yes, I'm Mr. Silcox doing it. I can see it.
Mr. Silcox unfortunately has officially resigned from the council. That paperwork, we did receive a letter from him that due to health issues, he was forced to resign from the council. Thank you for asking. He still is facing some very serious health issues. We have not heard from the Democratic Party, who will be replacing him yet. However, I believe they will hold a caucus in January, probably early January, to replace him, if not before.
What's that, came from the Democrats, was it a liberal jury? It's probably Democrats or Republicans.
No, so the way the rule reads is that it has to be, the paperwork has to be filed with the clerk's office, and then also with the chair for the Democratic Party. They'll hold a caucus with their precinct committee men or women, and they will select an appropriate candidate from there. So if anybody knows somebody who's interested, they can contact the Democratic Party, although that person would have had to vote in the last primary as a registered Democrat. So there's your answer on that. We are, however.
Registered Democrat, but you're a Republican.
Were you registered as a Democrat? Or you're just being difficult, Mr. Phil Townsley?
I'm saying I'm difficult because.
You can stop right there.
A Democrat, all right? Which is great, you know, because I'm a working field and Democrats are there. The Democratic Party is not as much for the working man as they used to be anymore. I've always worked for whoever I felt would do the job.
Well, that's.
Unfortunately, none of them do the job.
And we try to do ours here. We do try to do ours here, thank you. However, it would have to be a registered Democrat who took the position. So that being said, if you know someone who's interested, please let them know. We are all filing for reelection next year or, you know, or we'll be.
Half the council will.
Yes, some of us will be, some of us won't be.
How long is his position left yet?
Uh, one year.
One year?
His one year left in his term.
And how long are the positions that you're putting in?
Four years.
Four years.
Most are four. I believe there are some that are three, two, three years now.
And you get $9.95 a month?
$9.95.
I don't think anybody does it here for the pay.
No, not, let's just say none of us do it here for what we're paid. Because this pay rate has not changed in several years, so, and we're okay with that.
Yep.
That's, none of us do it for that reason, so. That being said, unless there are any other comments?
I moved to turn.
Thank you. Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Everyone have a happy holidays.
Yes, yes. Merry Christmas, everybody, and a happy new year. Happy holidays.